...to him, sir, today, 2021, during your town council meeting. All to order. You all would take one more and join me in the last.
I feel joined in our location, Father, as always. Great for your guidance and blessings as we make decisions on behalf of our town, our community, and all of our neighbors. We have said a few things with great reasons in mind and in heart. I ask that you keep the spirits standing in your prayers to many. And we protect all of our first responders and all of those who protect us somehow. Amen. All right. For open forum this evening, I have one individual that has signed up to speak. That is Mrs. Carter Schitt, also our tree board representative. She is not here, but she is in her house. So we'll move her agenda or her speaking time until she arrives. So we'll push her to the floor. I hear she's pretty close. Also, I just wanted to make a note, for clerk Walter, she has asked that we try to be really careful with our microphones and talk kind of directly into them. If we're looking at each other, we can go like that.
Or get research.
Yeah. Great. And we'll make some improvements, but otherwise we miss out on some of the important minutes, motions, and important items that we do talk about. You probably hear all the jokes and all of that, but not the important stuff, right? Yeah, that would be my guess. Okay. All right. So at this point in time tonight, we'll have a time limit in public hearing. But we're going to have town attorney Ramos. She has some hearing notes for our quasi-tuditional procedures. We have some new council folks tonight. And I want to make sure that everybody is up to speed on this. Counselor Ramos?
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to start off with your quasi-tuditional one-on-one. So you're going to have a quiet quasi-tuditional hearing tonight. And the town council must abide a criteria in Towns Code as opposed to formulate the policy under the law. The decisions we made this evening must be based on the evidence presented. During the public hearing, the town council can only consider and make a decision based on competent and substantial evidence, which is presented. The council is not allowed to take into consideration the popularity of their request. So what is competent and substantial evidence? That's evidence that's more than an opinion. It's fact-based testimony, which provides a substantial basis for which the facts and issue can be reasonably inferred. It consists of irrelevant evidence that a reasonable person would accept as adequate to support a conclusion and must relate to the merits of the application. This may include factual testimony of witness witnesses and the opinion testimony of experts, such as the R and B recommendation. It also constitutes substantial competent evidence. And information presented by the towns planning staff constitutes competent substantial evidence. So who has heard of providing this evidence? Initially, the applicant has heard of providing evidence, but we don't even provide it through Towns Code and regulations. If this may be reasonably proven, it's clear then the burden shifts to the town where those objecting to the application show that the application doesn't meet the applicable criteria. So the process for this evening, Mayor O'Brien will ask if anyone wishes to be considered an effective party. An effective party must have a direct interest in the application, such as someone who lives in close proximity and is allowed to cross the example witnesses and present as purposes. An effective party is not the applicant. Then the town clerk will declare a swearing-in town parent. Each town council member should disclose whether they had communications regarding who permitted, who submitted, and viewed the outside of the town public hearing process. And then she disclosed the nature of any such communications. This will allow any person who has an opinion to the contrary to be given a reasonable opportunity to refute or rewind to the communication. Many of our town staff made a presentation. The application of the applicants and effective parties may ask town staff questions. The applicant will then present evidence and witnesses. The applicant will listen to the asked questions by the town staff and town council and effective parties. Effective party can present their case without being able to be happy tonight. The public will be allowed to see rebuttal evidence being provided by the town staff, the applicant, and effective parties. And then closing statements being made provided by the town staff, applicant, and effective parties. And then any other decision. Any questions?
Counsel, is there any questions? So my only question is, Robert and I have just conferred on when we'll open the hearing and the presentation process. So we'll do the presentation before, and then we'll open the hearing and go through these steps for the process. Okay. Which are, and I want to be clear to everyone and clear to counsel, that either this is just a more formal, formal version of what we have done to pass for any of these other things, plus we have new council folks. And I think this just lays it out a little bit better, so we all know exactly what our responsibilities are. Do you, fair enough? So at this point, I will turn it over to our town planner, Brad Neillis. Robert, did you want to say anything prior?
No, just Brad's been working on this. Brad's the plan for the town of Windermere is not representing the applicant whatsoever. So everything that he's presenting tonight is based upon the data that was provided to him and making sure his performance with our land development codes, our land use, comp plan, and zoning requirements. So again, it's not advocating for or against the application itself.
So I guess prior to that, I want to make sure that that we'll ask if anyone is considered being an effective party, or is that during the, that's at this juncture, right?
Yes, Mary. I would suggest you ask that first.
That's a great suggestion. We'll do that. So at this point, I'll ask anyone whether they wish to be considered an effective party.
And that would mean just somebody besides the normal person who's going to make a public comment, someone who maybe looks extra project, that kind of thing.
So they might go, Jason.
I consider myself an effective party. I don't have anything to present or discuss.
Okay. Could you please step up here and just give us your name and address for the record, sir?
Daniel Floyd, 515 Oakdale Street, directly across from the.
Thank you very much. And at this point, the town clerk, clerk Walter, will swear in the town.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give regarding the Windermere downtown property PUD resoning and preliminary development plan will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And council members, at this time, I will ask you to disclose whether you had any communications regarding codes resoning the PUD outside of the town's public hearing process. And should disclose the nature of any such communications. This will allow any person who has an opinion to the contrary to be given a reasonable opportunity to approach the application. You have the first chance to communicate.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
On May 12th, I met with Susan Carter, and also Susan Carter, to walk the property to look at the trees and discuss various options, far as to what trees you could be saying, which ones can't say that.
Thinking about what I mean. Also, this is another time that certainly aren't the end of this public question. It's a little thing, conversations that we had during meetings. Counselor Zach?
I've had a slight walk through, yeah. But nothing discussed that is not discussed within the county. I wrote it out for you.
Yes, no. Counselor Zach?
Yes, I had a conversation with Brad from the youth staff during the garden. I tried to study this, but I didn't think the applicant.
I did, well, with Brad and Zach, too.
Okay, good. And I think we talked a little bit about that, the public meetings as. Counselor David?
I did. I had a conversation with Brad about the visually, just the verification of residents. It was a high needle.
Okay. And Mayor, that conversation with Ms. Neillis, with Carter, with Susan Carter, discussing a couple of things as well.
And I'm sure that I'm in a financial eye, certainly, that you're a bit in the spirit of, well, your idea for a corporate company that is a PC for the applicant. Our tenancy has no variant of decision, so it may need to be a tenancy or a still. But the hand here, I think, is my actual benefit of what a decision may be.
First of that. And Counselor Neillis can be standing, standing in front of the, tonight, as, or not as, oh, I'm sorry. He will be abstaining. Counselor Zach will be voting. Does anybody need to report our names? Ms. Neillis?
Thank you, Mary. Again, my name is Brad Neillis, with Waitren. I serve as a town plan. Just sort of, I've served as a town plan since 2014, and I'm very familiar with your code, your comprehensive plan. So, he's going to help me go through my background, so you go back one more time. I'm sorry. Just as a brief overview, again, as we all know where the project location is, but again, fair enough, we'll go back over this. This is that in northeast corner of Green Street and Sixth Avenue. It's a little bit over two acres in size. And the property owner, that, in downtown, the property is LLC. And as everyone knows, it's all property partially developed, with the state office, insurance office, the retail, ice cream shop, and then there's two single-family homes on the Oakdale side, as well as three property. So that's the property we're working on. So we are going through the plan, the development process. And in your code, it is a four-step process. And we've started this process back in 2019, almost to the day, 2019, actually, I've got to put up calendar schedules. So almost to the day is when we started. So we started with the pre-application meeting. That was with myself and the town manager, where we go over the process and potential issues at the beginning. The next step then is the conceptual plan review. And that was done in October of 2020. And what that conceptual plan was, I submitted a conceptual plan that was going to provide individual development review board members, which allowed them to provide individual comments. This was not a committee assignment. This was the code as of where each individual DRB member would provide comments based on that concept. What we do with those initial comments on the conceptual plan is that we then provide that to the applicant. So when they develop the preliminary development plan where we are tonight, they have that information from the early review by the DRB member. So that did occur in October. So now where we are, we're in the preliminary development plan process. And this is the part of the process where you make the decision to actually put the PUD zoning on the property. So if you do approve this tonight, this property will then become zone in U D. And also what you'll do tonight, if you approve it, you'll also approve this preliminary development plan. So as you all recall, we had the first public hearing for this in April, April 13th. And tonight's your second public hearing. Your DRB development review board reviewed the conceptual meeting in February, February 16th. They did review it. They reviewed the same plan that you had before you this evening. And they did recommend to the town council approval of the PUD zoning and of the preliminary development plan. You do have a recommendation of approval from your development review board. So that's where we are tonight. That's what your decision will be tonight. PUD zoning on the property as well as the preliminary development plan. The final step, which is to come after it tonight is approved, and that is then going into the final development plan, where they do the final engineering, the final design. You get a lot of the, some of the questions you have fully answered in the full details of it is that part of that process. That process will come back through another public hearing process. It'll come back to the development review board for their review. It'll come back to town council for public hearings, review all again as well. So again, it'll be opportunities. And as you'll hear further, we're going to have workshops again, and people are also involved in that process. So there is more process. So in terms of the purpose of the PUD, so again, and I'm going to say this five times, it's important. The PUD does not authorize any development on this property. So if you approve it tonight, it doesn't allow the applicant to go out there tomorrow and start building a new one. What the PUD does is signs a correct zoning and implements your adopted town master plan that was adopted by the town in 2004. And it also sets the ultimate, the maximum limitations on potential development on that site. So it sets kind of the boundary for what could happen on this property. And again, if the PUD, the preliminary development plan is approved this evening, it will come back to the development review board as to do as the final development plan prior to the development. So also the purpose, why this has to be a PUD? Now, I know this is a big question that we've done throughout the process. So the property itself has a land use zoning of commercial and residential within the town overlay district. So that's the important third part, which for an average person, they're not going to identify that or know what that is when they get from that. But it is identified, and it has been adopted that way for many years now. So what that says is, because it's in that overlay district, the only way this property can be developed is consistent with that town master plan that was adopted by the town in 2004 and implemented in your redevelopment code and in the comprehensive plan. It can only be developed consistent with that. And what your comprehensive plan says is, in order to implement this, you have to resole the property to plan, you need to develop and do the preliminary development plan. So that's why we're going through the PUD zoning. Even though it's already identified, it's in the town center overlay district, the master plan, it has to go through this process so the town, the town council can be sure that what's going to occur there is consistent with intent and purpose of that master plan that was adopted. So that's why you're going through this process tonight. And finally, again, with your town center design guidelines, because it's within the town center master plan, all the development on this property is regulated by the design guidelines, which are over and above your standard zoning requirements, which is like, relates like a building placement, the access to the property, how the parking is developed, the architecture of the buildings, very specific standards, and all the development has to be compliant on this property. So this just identifies and shows you again where this property is. The property's outlined there in circle in blue. And you can see, this is the master plan that was adopted by the town. And what you see there on the top of the block, I'll call it, in the morning area, that's what was called in the master plan, the building zone. That is where the buildings are required to be placed on this piece of property. And then you see on the bottom of the block, I'll call it, along Oakdale Street, it's called the parking zone within this master plan. And so in that area, the only thing that can be there is parking, the stormwater, the set deck, things like that. No buildings, no structures can be within that parking zone. You also see there the green outline along the perimeter of the property. That's the required 20-foot buffer that is required as part of the master plan. They have to have at least, they have to have a 20-foot buffer along Oakdale Street and also along portion of Sixth Avenue as part of the master plan. Then it also requires the six-foot wall along that, within that buffer, with landscaping on the outside of the wall on the property. And that's, that's all part of it. The other part of the master plan, and also you can see there on Sixth Avenue, it limits the access there, right in, right out, home. So that's a limitation to access, and then it shows the full access out on Fifth Avenue on the other side. So this plan has to be followed for development of this property. This is what's adopted within redevelopment code. This is what's adopted within the comprehensive. This is the future land use back and zoning map. One of the nicest in the hearing in the town of Windermere, your future land use and your zoning are basically part of the same. So we won't get to all of that, so that's useful on hand. Unfortunately, the part I would show you is behind Mr. Williams there, it's in that little inside. The block is there on Sixth, on the north side of Sixth Avenue. And again, this is your future land use. Again, as I said earlier, the front has the commercial, the back has the residential, but it's all within that dark outline, which is your town center overlay district, which requires this property to be developed consistent with the council design guidelines. So this is adopted as part of the land use map, it's part of the zoning map, as well as your property as a plan and a development plan. So what is the private? It's the proposing to demolish what's on the property now to the buildings and rebuild up to 21,700 feet of square feet of retail, restaurant, and offices. So that's what we're proposing to do. The building can be no higher than 35 feet. Part of one of the buildings right now is the closing two stories. However, it'll still have to be 35 feet or less, not to see that. And that is the standard throughout the town of Windermere. It's only 35. So limited to that 35-foot height limitation. There will be the internal off-street parking and stormwater in that parking zone that will show there on the master plan, in that area along Oakdale. They will be providing the required project boundary buffer and the request that you have before you approve the PUD zoning and the preliminary development plan. So here's the preliminary development plan. And I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, because we've seen this a few times now. And this is preliminary, preliminary, okay, this is preliminary. So ultimately, when they get to the final, if this gets approved and they get to the final engineering plan, this will change somewhat, not significant. It will not change significantly. The most significant thing that cannot change, those buildings can't go to the other side no longer. They have to stay on that south park or on the west side of that property. They can't do that. But the building size may change a little bit, things like that, the parking will change. And as, and actually, as we talk about the trees and try to save as many trees as we can, that will have an impact ultimately on what may be the final group of what this will be. But generally and overall, this is what it will be. This is what the general layout will be. So we have the buildings that are along Main Street and Sixth Avenue. It does what the court wants it to do. It runs onto the sidewalk, create that walkable space that that space is defined for the folks to enjoy downtown. Because you do have a fantastic downtown. It has that, it has a courtyard between the two buildings. Also take advantage of that. And we have the parking field. That will actually change as this goes through, because right now they can show that entire area is parking. As you go through their further analysis, stormwater will probably change, set deck may change. So that, that actual layout of the parking will most likely change looking forward. But, but that shows you the work, I'll say worse, but the most it could be, that's the most it could be. So it didn't want to be more than what you see there today. In terms of, one more. In terms of the access, also I need to point out there on Sixth Avenue, you see the driveway is a right in, right out, as required by the master plan. And then you can see the little bulb there on the west east side. That entryway is where the required right-hand turn lane would be installed to get access to the property. And then on the other side, on East Fifth, they have the access out on Sixth Avenue. There is no access on the Oakdale Street. There is no vehicle access to the driveways. All access will come off of Sixth or off of that. In terms of what's in that change, as I said, it's already structured out there, as we all know. So basically, we're generally doubling what's out there today. What's out there today is about 10,700 several square feet. We're looking at 21,750, which is the net change of 10,976. So we are looking at that. But as you all, look at that property, a lot of that property is safe, nondeveloped, it's not a lot on that property at all. In terms of the tree impact, I would say there's very two significant issues that we discussed all our workshops, all the meetings. This is one A, and we got one A and one B, I would say. So the tree impact. So as you all are aware, the applicant did provide an updated survey on April 9th that does show the tree trees on the site. I want to say it's not official tree survey. It is a survey that shows trees, so there is distinction. There's, it's a survey that shows trees, it shows the trees. So we have that updated at your, at the DRB meeting. Prior to that, we did not have an updated survey that showed the trees on the site. The one that was submitted originally was from 2006, but we now do have one that is recent, that was by April 9th, that is the signed sealed survey. Then on April, oh, I'm sorry, on May 12th, the town did receive a certified harvest report by Bill Samnick, that were certified harvest here in Florida. That's dated December 1st, 2020. So we also do have that report, which is part of your agenda package this evening. And what that report does for this private, and if this moves forward, it does provide an analysis and recommendations for the tree, recommendations for setbacks and separation for the trees, and information that's in that report will then be used and disposed for the final development plan to develop that tree mitigation plan that will be developed with the tree board, with the development review board, and then with all the town council. So that gives information and input to that process that it could explore. So it is good that we have that at this point. And the other important point with the trees is, like any other development in the town of Windermere, they are still subject to the town's tree organs and your mitigation and protection. So if there's trees that are being removed, trees that are being changed, if they do have to provide, as I said with the code, proper mitigation for that, whether that's a payment or replacement or whatever, it's to reach about a town council. So they are subject by anyone else to be aligned with the town's tree, tree boards. That is the updated survey. I don't know, but that is the survey that was submitted, wasn't it? In terms of traffic, this one I'll call one D here. So traffic is also a big, little big point of discussion. So in your applicant, in your agenda item, was submitted with the application, was a traffic study that was done by a traffic engineer for the applicant. And what that traffic study did, and this was, and they used professional methodology to do this, is what they did is they looked at the potential development on this piece of property. I will say too, at this point, when you read it, if you read that report, read that report, it actually analyzes it at 26,000 square, because it was actually done when they had enough ability to propose it this way. So actually, a little bit overstays central out, but still, it's good information to look at, to review. So that was done. And how a traffic study is, and I'm trying to simplify this, is basically how it happens is they're going to look at the proposed uses, and then use what the institute traffic engineers had, developed called trip generation rights. And it's the studies that are done all over the country. And for different use types, so the top is retail, commercial, resident, whatever the use type is, they have rates. It will say, well, a thousand square feet, I'm going to make up another pair, a thousand square feet will generate 10 trips per minute. They give you those rates. So what a traffic study does, and uses those rates to generate, well, say, a raw potential trip generation number. And what's important to understand here too is, these are estimates. Nobody can guarantee you something built, what the actual real traffic is going to be, but this is a best estimate you can do based upon professional analysis. But from that raw number, in particular for this project, because of the unique situation of the town of Windermere, there are also factors where that raw number is able to be adjusted. So in this case, what they did, there's a great opportunity here in the town for pedestrian access, we have the brave walkable downtown. So the professional analysis does allow for a discount, I'll call it, in how much traffic would be generated for this project based on pedestrian. So they apply that to that. They also look at past five trips. So what that means is, somebody's on their way home, and they just happen to go by there and they stop to pick something up. They pick up dinner to go home. That's under end destination. It's somewhere they're stopping on their way to somewhere else. So really, you don't assign that, that trip to that use, because that's not the only place they're going, they're going somewhere else. So there's also a discount for that. So when they do that analysis within the traffic study, they come out with, I'll call the net traffic impact. And that's what is analyzed as part of the traffic study. So here in the town of Windermere, the town's consulting engineer, Kelly Moore and Associates, and their traffic engineers, they did review the traffic study that was submitted, and the review is part of your, it's part of your agenda package to them. And what Kelly Moore found when they reviewed it, they also reviewed the methodology as well, prior to the review study, to agree with that they're analyzing it professionally in a separate manner. They did agree to that. So when Kelly Moore reviewed it, they accepted the traffic study and made a recommendation and said, due to the existing conditions of queuing on East Sixth Avenue, that they felt it was important to put a right turn lane into the project to account for that traffic during peak hours, to give them an opportunity to turn in without further vacuuming of that queue. So that right turn lane is being proposed as part of the preliminary development plan. They have agreed to provide that right turn lane. Uh, also, the town is in process of considering improvements to, to just the roundabout area, it's sixth and Main Street. That also helped to improve the traffic flow. So, so there are, are opportunities. With the town master plan as well, it limits the access only off the Sixth Avenue, the right-in, right-out. No access on this bit, and that's what they're doing, so they are limiting the access to. The other point that I did want to bring out today too is, I know there's questions about, well, why can't we make the developer fix the problems up there? What's going on? Or there's a reason, specific reason for that. Is back prior to two thousand and eleven in the state of Florida, us planners were able to tell developers, you know what, there's too much traffic on this road, you either fix it or we're going to deny your application. We used to be able to do that prior to two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eleven, the state law changed. We planned the add-in and the state law changed significantly. And one of the major changes related to transportation, traffic impact analysis and mitigation is local governments can no longer tell the developer that there's too much traffic here, you can't build. There's too much traffic, but what we can tell the developer, and that's what we are requiring of this Sixth Avenue as part of this approval that's approved, is however, you have to mitigate your share of additional traffic that you're putting onto the network, you're putting on the roadway. So in this case, that's what's happening, is as part of the condition is through the final development plan, there'll be a transportation mitigation agreement between the applicant and the town, which will define what is their payment to the town to mitigate for their additional traffic into the network. So that's what they're doing. So really, we can't say to the developer, you can't come in, there's too much traffic. But we can't say to the developer, and we are saying to the developer in this case, but you got to mitigate. You still have to mitigate for what you're adding to your proportional share of what that is. So that's how we're, we are addressing that. Um, so that is a change, I think it's important for people to understand. The other part of traffic here in the town of Lindemere is, where traffic problem is external. It's people coming through your town, it's people that live outside of the town of Lindemere. So the, the queuing that we see on Sixth Avenue, that's people heading just west to, to Horizon West and things like that. So you have an external problem of traffic. Um, so, so that also played as a look at this. We have a developer to say, we're not going to hold you up because it's something you can't control outside of our jurisdiction. But you do have to pay for your mitigation, your addition to that, and that's what, that's the approach to this. Jump the headlights on, that's okay. In terms of the net change that's there, uh, when we look at the existing trips that are out there with existing uses in the AM, the net change from the morning, that's between seven and nine. It's about fourteen trips in the morning AM peak, now that's in one hour, that's not over two hours, that's in one hour, fourteen trips. In the PM peak, that net change is about thirty-nine trips in that one hour, and then the average is twenty-seven. So, so you can see in terms of the numbers of the peak hour, and that's what traffic engineers and planners, traffic planners, like, I started my career as a traffic planner. Um, that's what we focus on is that peak hour, because that's the greatest impact on the system, on the ability to travel through the community is that peak hour. Not during twenty-four hours with, with that peak hour, so that's where we focus on is the peak hour. What we also asked Kenley Horne to do, because that was a question that came up first public here, and it is good information to have is, what is the impact of adding the traffic to the existing traffic? Or how much of a percent are we adding to what's already on the roadway? So Kenley Horne did that analysis for us, and that's what you see on the slide. So for the total project traffic, so for the twenty-four hours, it's a little bit over one percent of the existing traffic volume that are out there. And that PM peak hour traffic is just under one percent. So we can say generally it's about a one percent of what's already out there. In traffic planning world, anything less than five percent is considered the minimus, meaning it has really no impact in terms of the flow of the operation of the facility. So we do have a traffic study done by the applicant, we have the town's traffic engineer that have made a determination that there isn't a minimalist impact in terms of the capacity, but there is any for an operational impact, because that's how our focus goes to. It doesn't focus on capacity, but now the focus is on safety and access. And making sure that's done properly, not to cause a problem, a safety problem. Therefore, we have the proposed right turn. Water and sewer, um, so this property will be served by Orange County Utilities for quote-unquote water. And as we discussed earlier or previously meeting, um, they will have a septic system on this property. At this point, they have not designed it, we don't have that information about it. The expectation, but we'll see when it's done, is that once they do that, they may find out we're going to have to reduce parking areas, which then may change to reduce the size of the buildings. So that only details, that will be worked out as part of that final development plan, and see what that impact of that, um, what will happen. So that will, will come forward as part of development plan. But they are aware and it is documented within the application, they will be getting the septic and they will get permitted to the Orange County Utilities. Stormwater, in terms of stormwater, so right now, the community development plan shows a potential retention area in that northeast, in northeast corner of the property. But I do also need to make it clear tonight, that that's not engineered. That's just a box on the piece of paper at the moment, you'll be seeing today. So ultimately, when they go through the engineering for this, they, and they'll have to go through the South Water Water Mansion District for environmental permitting, stormwater permitting, that stormwater pond will most likely change. Maybe bigger, maybe smaller, maybe move a little bit, it will change based on the final engineer. And we will see that as a town when they come through with that final management plan. Or, and the other important point I want to make about for stormwater, and she was also discussed earlier, is there is a condition within the PUD conditions, where we do say to the developer, we want you to, to maximize your use of previous materials within your parking lots. We want, want, you know, you do as much kind of green infrastructure that, that is feasible, that works for your property projects. We do have that as one of the conditions. Parking and buffers. So, um, as I said earlier, the parking that we see on, and now that maxed it out. But the PUD condition, there is a condition in the PUD that does allow, this is very important, that the town council, this would be the implement tree board of the developer view board, it does allow the town council to reuse the required parking in order to save, in order to protect. We're not going to sacrifice a tree just for the sake of it and that parking space. So that, that's an important trade-off that the town has to ensure to protect as many trees as feasible, as reasonable, on this property. I get any flexibility in terms of they have a number of parking spaces that are required within this, this project. Um, in terms of the buffer as well, as I said earlier, they are providing a twenty-foot buffer in six-foot wall along Oakdale Street, along proportionally Sixth Avenue and the fifth. It, that showed up with preliminary development plan. But we did provide a condition within the PUD, this was discussed at one of our previous meetings, that does also allow the town council to approve an alternative location or design to the landscape of the wall. Again, with the intent to limit the impact on the existing trees that are out there. We don't want to put a tree, a wall in that'll have a negative impact on the loop system or the tree is trying to be protected. So again, as this goes through the final development plan process, it goes, works with the tree board, works with the DRB, and to the town council. Again, there's an opportunity for the council to approve the wall that's due job, the wall that you put in a difficult patient, maybe a different design type, um, to protect the tree. But again, the ultimate part of this is protecting the trees and, and not sacrificing the trees just for some other reason that, that there could be a reasonable alternative to get to that, the same end. And in terms of the one waiver, they are asking for one waiver of the PUD submittal requirements. So I need to be clear here too, they're not asking for a waiver from any of the design standards or any of the requirements of PUD, PUD that they have to meet. What they are asking for is a waiver to one of the submissions that is required in the code for PUD, which is the act of the size of most built. So, but what the applicant has done is they have shown in the plans and have stated within our meetings that they fully will and intend to meet the architectural design guideline of the town center, Old Way District, as well as being compatible with the town center or the town administration, all the works going up, the new brewery going up. So the other new construction is happening to be consistent with this, this trend of downtown. But you all will see as part of the final development plan what the building will look like. So you will see them, they will come to you through the final development plan. In terms of the PUD development issues, this is a kind of the hierarchy and I'll really be sort of be specific there just at the moment. I'm almost there. So in terms of the PUD conditions, what's in your ordinance is we have conditions that will go along with the PUD to, to assure that it meets the intent of the PUD, it meets the intent of the town, it protects the interest and promotes the town and the way that the town council wants to do. These PUD conditions also, to be clear to everyone, runs with the land, they don't go away if the property is sold. These conditions still stay in effect, it doesn't change. The only way these conditions could change, if they're adopted, is to have to come back to the process, come back to public hearing, come back to the town council. To approve that, so these, these are in place, these are adopted, these are in place. So in terms of just in general, what these conditions cover is the mitigation agreements with the transportation that we talked about. We also have a agreement related to utilities, which will be pretty minor since they are getting into Orange County. As part of the final development plan, so we will have a gate creation of this, um, as part of that final development plan. Um, the final development plan, we have a very strong emphasis within these conditions of tree protection, mitigation, and landscaping, and stormwater management. So they, they need to be compliant with the stormwater, with the design standards and the proper handling of properties. We have very specific conditions, I'll get to those, we'll, we'll, we'll say. In terms of construction management, we want, we have some construction staging, construction impacts on these properties. Um, we identify a permitted land use that are consistent with your comprehensive plan and the development code on this property. And it also provides for three town council workshops as they go through the final development plan process outside of your public hearings, where there will be a collaborative development of that final development plan with the town, together with the developer. So that, those are the general statements. So in terms of some specifics, and what I'm identifying here are changes that occurred between the first hearing in April to our hearing today in June. We did make changes based on the first public hearing. We made changes on the public workshop that we had in May, and also there were some changes provided by the applicant that staffed to the agreement. So those are the ones I'll identify for you right now. So we did clarify that in terms of how we mentioned those four areas, that we're only going to include outside diet if it's a permanent, um, setup, not just temporary, but if it's open. If it's a permanent, even special event, it would be a permanent seating area that would be in town, park and court area. Um, in terms of the twenty-foot design increment, we clarified that that needs no greater than twenty-foot increments. In case we have a forty-two-foot wide building, that, that would work, that would apply. We did clarify the minimum parking size is nine feet by eighteen and a half feet long, consistent with the design guidelines. And the number of those have changed based on the development that on the development plan, with the past trees. Um, we are requiring the developer, the professionals for the certified arbiters during the development, final development plan and throughout the construction of the project to ensure that they do meet the requirements of the tree mitigation plan that is developed as part of that final development plan. Um, we clarified that there is screening required to block new construction, there are all phases of construction. So screening is similar to what we have down facilities, where the screen comes in from the outside. Um, there was a condition that said the wall needed to be the first thing constructed, and we did review that at request of the applicant, because it didn't make sense in terms of construction phasing and timing. And we're going to have the screening there anyhow, so really we do need to do there. So we did, uh, review that as well, conditions. We did put a, a statement that it does allow outdoor display of merchandise consistent with the town standard requirements. You already have provisions within your code that allows your outdoor business to have outdoor display of merchandise. So just verifying that they have the same rights as the other businesses down the town. Uh, and we had a discussion at the last meeting, initially, there was a position to talk about police chief, town manager determining this whole discretion, whether they had to pay some money for the town for law enforcement. And it was agreed at that meeting that there isn't for that, because of the side of the private, so we just state that with this, this condition that there, that it is confirmed by the town manager and the police chief, but there is not any current for the town or law enforcement. And so the next one is, uh, one of the comments that came up when we talked about potential mitigation was initially what the, the commission said was, um, assisting with the roundabout and additional pricing at, at main at sixth. Um, and a lot of concern about pricing at sixth and Oakdale, so we did have that as part of one of the potential improvements that could be considered as part of that mitigation, is that additional best across of that location. Um, as I said earlier, we added that clarification, that screen wall, that the jobs are handled through design with your council approval. Again, to protect the trees that are on the property, but even more important with the screen wall is, and as y'all know, within the right-of-way that's adjacent to this property, there are a lot of trees required. So also to protect the trees that are in the right-of-way as well, so there may be a need for that, that. That will see that. Um, we add a requirement that owners submit a tree mitigation plan and landscape plan of buffer, which includes the wall to the tree board. So which will allow then the tree board to review it and provide our activations to developer view board and the town council. So again, that gets the tree board active into the process. I will say, Ms. Carter, your chair of the board has already been very active in the process of providing, providing a very good impact about this, this project throughout. Uh, we also add a condition that the town will also engage certified arbiters to oversee tree issues with the owner. We're speaking to the town for the cost of the town arbiters. So then the town will also have their own arbiters to ensure that what's happening there is consistent with the, with the tree mitigation plan. I was corrected by the arbiters, it was not such thing as the licensed arbiters. We fix that, certified arbiters. Um, and then finally, and this was actually something that Ms. Carter had suggested, I did add this to the condition, is also the references, the HANS A three hundred standard for tree, for tree protection. It's already in your code, but we are reiterating the conditions, that they have to leave us with the military tree protection standards throughout the construction. So those are the conditions. So my last slide, that's the last slide. So I will go with this, this framework that has a job, just reminded that this is quasi-judicial, substantial public evidence of the three pieces that we're looking at in terms of our review. For your review, it's compliant with your comprehensive plan, compliant with the development code, and compliant with the town center design plan. Those are the areas of, of, of review that we have to, for compliance. Again, Ms. Ramos is here, if you have any questions about what the, which is, uh, applying to that. The other important reminder is, there is a charter requirement for the town, we have this with brewery resulting as well. So any rezoning in the town of Lindemere that is not to residential, so anything that's a non-residential rezoning, which would basically be any rezoning in the town. Um, requires seventy percent of the town council to approve a rezoning. So in this case, and Ms. Ramos previously had already provided an opinion that in this case where we have, the council needs to abstain. So we have four voting numbers, so that means three of the four, at least three of the four have to approve the rezoning to, to be deported.
Actually, no, just add one thing, that's a policy that the council decided for resolution two thousand nineteen zero three to reflect what Brad just said. So you're only counting the votes that can vote for what is a seventy percent.
Here's our final slide. So the next steps, if you approve the PUD and preliminary development plan this evening, what will happen next, the developer will go back to their final development plan, through all the workshops and public hearings, come back to the developer's view board, to the town council with the final plan, again, on stage of N Y representation. No developer is authorized until town council approves the final development. So again, there's a lot more work to be done before anything changes over there on the other side of the issue. So that is my presentation this evening, if you have any questions.
Brad, we got the last public workshop that we had, residents. They have, we did say something about a packaging plan, is that still on the table? Or does the septic system replace any notion of a packaging plan?
There, I don't have any more information on that, Mr. Stent, so we would address that as part of. So we would address that as part of the work you're doing, on what type of system they have to use for the waste water. Thank you, sir. Council, any further questions, comments, thoughts, concerns on the floor?
Thank you, Brad. I have a question about the updated PUD development conditions, will those apply to other future developments?
Yes, sir, they're actually part of the ordinance that you have before you receive them, they're actually included within tonight's ordinance.
So if somebody else wants to develop their, they'll have the same restriction.
Yes, sir, yeah, if you approve the ordinance that you have in your package tonight, includes all those additional positions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any further questions or comments?
And for this moment, Brad, we can, have you seen the podium there? Susan Carter, I do have you for a public comment. Do you want to do that now, or should I do that during the public hearing? Your choice, or both?
During the public hearing, I did have two corrections, one would be ISA certified arborists versus certified arborists. And the other was to reflect the fact that the the tree survey by Joe Samnick did not include the property that has the yellow house. So it's unfortunate.
Susan, you're going to get specific to me while you're going to get to the live. I thought you had a quick one, sorry.
I didn't. I'm sorry, I'm not doing it.
No, no, I'm wrong, I'm even traveling, so name, address, report, and your comments.
Susan Carter, 106 Palm Street, your tree board chair. So number one, it would be ISA certified arborist, if I make a correction, and also to include that the tree survey by Joe Samnick included a few additional trees outside the property, and then there were just not included the trees on that property with the last. They thought it was private property, so. And then if I never try it until later.
That's fine, thank you, sir. And I believe it's 119 East 6th Avenue, am I correct? The yellow house?
I believe that's right.
I have a quick question.
Mayor, I suggest. I was going to say, I suggest you let the applicant, Detective Barnes, yes.
Yeah, so we'll let the applicant go, then we'll have a Detective Barnes.
And Detective Barnes can ask any questions they want.
Then we'll get the whole complete picture, and then you can comment. And at this point, we'll have the applicant.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give regarding the Windermere downtown property PUD reselling and preliminary development plan will be the truth, a whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
Yes.
Good evening, Chip Paul, Paul Development Services Incorporated, 1300 Austria, Atlanta. We've been working on this, Brad mentioned, for years now, so this is fun to get this hearing. We've tried very hard to meet every comprehensive plan policy, every town public policy, all the OBC standards and the standard for the OBC. So we try to compartmentalize the plan provided to you tonight to meet all those different standards. We believe we have, and we need that your staff believes we have as well. So with that, I don't think I need to spend much more time, Brad did a very thorough job. I have a, I have a 45-foot car on the history book in here, how it's flown till today, I'll refrain from doing that. And if you have any questions, I just wanted to have an answer.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Robert, I see your microphone.
Well, I believe the applicant was going to request one that there be a cap put on the arborist amount that is going to be charged to the applicant. I believe it's far one, that cap to be at $5,000, but again, that's a town council, too. And then secondarily, the discussion relative to the public input workshop where it was mentioned about a packaging plan. Is that still on the table, or is that something that council is not willing to consider, and is that a subject system way out there?
I mean, I think the difficulty for us arborists, we don't have the information to make a competent decision on a package plan, so. You know, the downside of just saying no, then maybe that's a great solution, I I don't, you know, possible for us to tell the structure.
The package plan, that might be what they, they're calling it, and it's not like it was 20 years ago. We had these large things that that was then taking care of the sanitary. I've seen a number of demonstrations about this, St. John's River Water Management, and they have some very slick new systems that actually have virtually, it virtually cleans everything, and you don't even need that much strength. And so that's the way the whole industry is going, it's moved that way. And so I think it would be worth a while to wait with the MVP and see the specific presentation of what's given, because using a system like that could be far superior to the typical tank and drainage field. And to go to this new technology, that they have a test going on at the Seaman Popper right now for about 50 homes, I believe. And they virtually don't have to train.
You know, I mean, this is the the challenge of not having that information and that ability for councils to look at that, staff to look at that. That becomes a challenge, is, I mean, that's something we can still work out in final development?
Yeah, that was anything workable place to do it, and then you know exactly how, when it comes to that, it really, how many square foot restaurants? Restaurants going to generate far more sanitary than any of those other users combined. So it really comes down to when the plan burns up, and we know that instead of 20, 200 square foot restaurant, or 600 square foot restaurant, that will then drive the whole sanitary issue, and you'll be able to get very detailed information.
Brad, would you comment on that, please?
Absolutely, thanks. And that is the reason in your condition, requiring the utility mitigation plan be put by town council. That is absolutely where that discussion would happen, and where the town council would make that decision whether you want to accept that or not. So you absolutely have the ability and the right, and also the obligation, to have that review as part of that final development.
Right, because what I don't want to occur is that we don't look at a great solution, because we don't have the information. So I think, as long as we have the ample opportunity to do so, do the continuation of the process of the final development. I see some objection from council, I would be comfortable at that time getting that information. All right, I see no objection. Mr. Carter, do you have anything further from the applicant perspective? Thank you, sir.
Did you want to address the $5,000 cap?
Yes, Robert, we can do that, I'm uncomfortable with, I'm certainly not comfortable with a $5,000 cap. And I want to make sure, I think this is a prime concern, and I think we're, I think we've been reasonable throughout, continue to be reasonable. We're not going to pass any undue burden, one way or another, but I'm not comfortable with a $5,000 cap. Counsel? Yes, Mayor, I'm opposed to a cap on the arborists at all. And I think the arborists that we're going to do, that we contract with, it's not going to be starting from scratch, they're not going to be going back to square one. They're going to be using Mr. Samnick's recommendations and treaty report as a basis going forward. Mr. Samnick, yeah, because it said he's going to be on board with the whole thing. And we're just going to have someone on our side consulting, you know, for the town's benefit, making sure that, you know, that both arborists are on the same page. And as far as the trees go, we know, obviously, we've had a lot of discussions, you know, we're not going to say they're a tree, but the ones we do say, we're going to have to make sure that those conditions that they're being built around are are, so that's, I think, about two years from now, or actually projects to done. So like I said, I'm going to ask for, I don't think the cost is going to be excessive, and then if their arborists and our arborists agree on things, go ask the state money on treaty mitigation costs, because it will be a little work around, you know, that type of thing, so. Robert, what do you see in this regard for the non-abilities of the arborists, sir? That's a surprise question.
I don't have that number available, but I heard that they were really involved at the very beginning, and now it's for pretty much running, it's based at Austin.
But it's not in some incredible burden on the project?
No, it's based, probably not, probably at around the five to seven thousand mark.
Counsel, any further comments on your arborist cap?
Seeing none, you know, again, we were reasonable, but I'm not, I'm not. At this point, if you can have any effective arguments, if you can present any questions or any ideas, here now, you'll create the need. If you'll come to the podium, go ahead and give your name and address and for the record.
And 105 Oakdale Street, two questions. One, earlier, Brad, when we were presenting, you referred to the dry school area as a retention pond. Is that still, it's impacted that we get retention pond, because the whole project, you talked about there, you mean, Brad, and how you're going to get pond is a.
Sure, no, there's no decision on whether to get a dry pond, and I, all of us just kind of talking about use. But no, it actually designed about the same quantity that I had dropped, and that reserve the final development plan.
Thank you. So potentially, it might not be dry school, or it could be a wet retention pond, to clarify.
I am not an engineer, so I don't want to guess what it would be.
And it's also something that could be dictated through planning, through type of, type of system that you utilize, as well as public and council, right, that fair say?
Yes, sir, it also, I have the water management district, water supply as part of the storm. So the best, the best information I would say, and he had, he was a very lawful prosecutor, made his involvement, absolutely justice to us, so we absolutely can update on what's happening with that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That will be ready for our, so pretty passionate about that. Second question I had is the party, is the party going to be reserved for building tenants and patrons, or will we go with the public?
We're hoping they're not building without the parking lot, because the corporate tenants, right? The, yeah, the plan is all, it may get one way or the other. So it's up to the developer and whether they desire to comply, or if the council will work with the developer, it will.
Either probably you are, our preference, I'm certain you have a preference, which is, I'm assuming that you prefer less parking, or more parking, right?
Less parking is preferred, but I just want to hear is, just going to be much totally, so you go over parking here, if you're, you know, attending or the office or your patron versus, you know, go over parking, let it take issue.
I mean, I think we'll work our way through that, we have a long history of doing our best to add some compliant parking resources at some point, the limited impacts to to residents, you know, in terms of this re-parking and things like that, so. You know, again, we're going to do our best to, to go through the process, so we get to know how that that's perceived, you mean, that's way. Thank you.
Can I comment on this?
Yeah, go ahead to my video on that.
Jim Bar, the mayor. Asking about the retention area, it would be really hard for us to do that pond, so I'm assuming you want to see a rock pond?
Yes.
So we'll be back in line upon, maybe, that's not retention. You know, not on the table there, so we really have to go back on, so I wouldn't know what to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Any additional comment from any faculty party? All right, Susan Carter, few words. And you seem to be very in the back, and then you've been in the conference, so you're kind of working your way to the back here.
Yes, I've been in conference, we've got trees, and hearings, and everything. I appreciate this, I appreciate everybody's working together. I think we can come up with some solutions that are going to make everybody happy, or most of everybody happy. I, I've had friends go through, you know, people who are creative, you can save a few more trees in the parking lot area, it would be nice. Again, I'm not going to go over any, and I saw the universe from our time, but on the root protection things, one of the things I want to say, one of the things that happened recently, I actually learned while I was at tree conference, was the roof over the town offices, they, they made said they had to redesign the roof over the town offices because trees were going to get impacted, and then you've got trees that you were talking about protecting. And with this flexibility, I'm not making excuses, I apologize, but I, when they went to do the roof on the town offices, the trees were going to be impacted too much, so we aren't protecting. And so it's going to require pre-keeping, it would be excessive, and landed a death in the tree. They, I was totally with the group, and they redesigned the roof, said they were going to be compatible. When asking this, I appreciate you, I'm doing this, kind of asking to continue with this flexibility in our design. We're protecting, coming back here, we signed it as a result. And asking, and I know it sounds a little strange, to ask on a landscape plan, that we have to say so, or on the fencing, I think being flexible and facing, which we always get as a department, the landscape plan mainly is that we spend all of the time protecting root signs. To come back in and open the landscape of those same root signs, when they completely impacted, you just have. So our request is that, you know, who we look at, and we look at what the best practice would be for the trees, that we just might say. It's really, we discussed, and I should, I think, we've been really, everybody's been pretty clear on everything, I think. I do like the idea of adding arborists on site as we have at the town offices, that especially in critical times, root grading, of root protection things, and then continuing with other reports as the discretion goes on. I'm also declaring, when the property is cleared, so I appreciate everybody's support. When I look at it, a lot of the trees are on the exterior, on the town, on my own way, and some of them might not, because that makes it a little creative. I think you could say there's been more than we think, and then I think less impact, I mean, too. So I appreciate the work that efforts on us.
Thank you very much, and, and yeah, much appreciation to staff and the engineers and designers. I mean, and just to clarify, to say that tree, and that's a big example, or a leading class, if you want to, I'd do where we can, and I can.
So, Mayor, I really just said the, the requirement is harder, if you do have a condition, we'll get your view. According to tonight, the examiner, as Carter asked, the tree board, she will, the tree board will get the opportunity to do the mitigation plan, or landscape plan on the wall to address it, so that is a good time.
Thank you, Brad, and I think one of the things that I've tried to do is to learn as we've done some developments of different places, sizes, to make the process better, to, I would, I think that's what we're seeing, we're all that, so we appreciate it. So to, any additional comments? Counsel, any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we, unless there's any objections, we can move to the hearing. All right. Then close our within your town council meeting for June eighth, twenty twenty one at seven thirteen P M. And open a town within your, uh, hearing on ordinance number twenty two, twenty twenty one dash zero one. Within your town council property, you're zoning the north end of the town within your for teenage group zoning, managing the town. Mayor's twenty map, two twenty one seven acres, more or less a real property. Located within the town center district overlay for the northeast corner of East Street and East Sixth Avenue. This is more specifically described from commercial and residential zoning to planting and development, providing durability, coverability, comfort, justification. And effective payment. At this point, again, if there's any other comment, I have the opportunity to consider during the year. All right, seeing none. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none. We'll close our town within your hearing, uh, at seven fourteen P M, June eighth, twenty twenty one. And we'll reopen our within your town council meeting for the same date at seven fourteen P M. Counsel, we're looking for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero one, within your downtown property, you're getting. Motion to approve the. Motion to approve from counsel person that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from counsel person. Okay, counsel, any further discussion? And I'll remind everyone again that counsel person will be a standing for a vote. Further questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll begin voting with counsel person. Aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries four to zero, but she needs the requirements. Thank you, counsel, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. That's good. We have, uh.
Thank you all very much. This is.
Any ideas, greetings, uh, for our, for, thank you everybody for participating. Um, we do have a little bit of more business to do. If anybody wants to, uh, slide out, this would be a good moment to do that. Thank you all. We'll have a lot more opportunities for, uh. Counsel, we'll move to agenda item number six, or, uh, six, six eight, is your town council meeting minutes remain eleven point one. Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, counsel person wins. Second, I'll second. Second, counsel person, any discussion, counsel? Begin voting with counsel person.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
I can see your, thank you, counsel. Uh, item number seven, our agreements for committees and boards. Uh, item seven A, it's a new historical preservation board member, Kimberly Hawkins, H P V recommends approval. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve by counsel person Marty. Okay. Second, counsel person Wayne. Any discussion, counsel? Begin voting with counsel person Marty.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Wow. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Item seven E is a new historical preservation board executive, you are not voting for. Travis, Paul Net, Paul A. H P V recommends approval. Motion to approve, counsel person Wayne. Second, second, counsel person did. Any further conversation? Seeing none, begin voting with counsel person.
Aye.
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 Aye. Got like a smooth. Next up are, uh, is item nine, these are financial items. Uh, item nine A is a tennis court resurfacing price of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars. Uh, the attachment is included in your package. Counsel's staff recommends more speed. Any comment from public works or parks? Quick question here. Questions here. What's the currency, re-currency of.
This request may be of any use.
Additional comments or questions? Counsel, looking for a motion to approve, item nine A tennis court resurfacing in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, counsel person did. Second, second, counsel person did. Any further questions, counsel? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with counsel person.
Aye.
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 Counsel. Uh, next up is, uh, item. Confused here a little bit. So we got nine E, this is the twenty twenty one American Rescue Plan Act. Um, counsel, this is what we discussed at our previous workshop. This is American Rescue Act means providing premium pay for essential workers during the pandemic. That this is an amount of two thousand dollars per staff. Counsel, any, did you want to present on this any further?
We're good. We talked about it at the last, uh, workshop, incentive now, counsel, the money's not being released until we see money on the American Rescue Act.
I mean, a little slower than we anticipated, but absolutely, we can get the work done, uh, tonight. So counsel, uh, looking for a motion to approve.
Oh, that's good for you.
You can make a motion and we can talk or since that's where we're at. Okay, motion to approve, counsel? Thank you, counsel person Marty. Do we have a second? Can we have a second from counsel person's staff? Now, counsel person.
Well, it's just a quick question. I. My memory may be terrible, but I was, uh, remembering a thousand dollars.
I believe we said.
It was just for a full sum and then one thousand parts.
We're both right. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification, counsel person. Good, good work on your part. Um, counsel, any further discussions, comments or questions? Seeing none, we begin voting with counsel person.
All aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, counsel. Appreciate. Um, we have no other items for consideration unless counsel would like to bring some of those up. Um, that'll move us to the mayoral and counsel liaison reports. Uh, my only report for tonight. Is that, uh, I want to announce that former mayor, uh, Gene Spears passed away last night. Great guy, long-term resident. Whole family lives here. They've been very, not asked to do anything at this point. I haven't been in touch with the family. And, um, just wish everyone the best, be very pleased. Um, Gene has been a tremendous asset for town. Appreciate his service. Any further counsel liaison? Counsel person Marty.
Uh, just real briefly, we met with our team board, uh, Parks County P P D representatives. A, uh, this presentation from them and whatever, uh, what we can and can't do and what we shouldn't do. Part of our, uh, plan to have a protocol for, you know. Weekend calls that come in when, uh, tree companies from daytime or eight severe. Uh, parts beyond comes to town on weekends and start cutting down trees and cypress trees and the lake and that type of thing. So. Got a lot of interest with them. Susan's going to be, um, adding. Uh, a feature to the gazette called Tree One One, which is like, uh, what to do in an emergency. And get her shirt says tree police and, uh, green flashing light protect cars. So. Because honestly, the thing's probably going to.
If you put Jackie in charge of this, we won't have any progress.
So.
I read that. I come on your. Listen to the chain stuff goes over there.
Yeah.
They think I'm crazy all along, but they.
Well, I mean, no, we, we, we're losing our cannon faster than we could replace it. Uh, you know, we do have education. Place for these types of projects. We can't, we can't replace a tree. And it's just, you know. That we have to safeguard what we've got. So. This is another step, developing a protocol.
Maybe, uh, maybe next meeting you can report out real quick on, on what that strategy exactly is. Uh, I think the, the newsletter piece and so I'll start as well. It's a, it's a tough one for sure.
I think it's one way to answer, not in the box.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, the issue is, you know, if you call Orange County, uh, call three one one, they'll open a case immediately, but they will get to it online. But it, you know, the true story's a long gone. So, uh, so we've got to step up. Kind of, uh, not so much the worst, but whereas everybody, a lot of people, they don't know.
That's what I was going to ask him, that like firm list of. People who are allowed to head down trees in the town. We don't really love, is that my all?
It would be like this, but, uh, but.
What, what everyone has to understand as well is that fortunately, the state legislatures, it are a little ways. A lot of what we might choose to do locally, um, that is unfortunate. And, uh, and on that, but it is fact. Uh, so we've got to work within what we're left with. Uh, and work for changing our assets to a better speaker controller and best me and our tree can, which I don't think is too much to ask. So. I'll get off my soapbox, but, uh, you know. The only other thing we can do at this juncture is education and enforcement of what we can. And I think that count this council is particularly strong, uh, in, in promoting and supporting whatever efforts we can use. Do the candidate, uh, when you grow new trees and just support any efforts that we can. The more trees we can land in the right locations of the right type, the better, um, no matter what that takes. We're behind you a hundred percent.
Yes, I'm.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Otherwise, working, I have to make up what I say.
Okay. You have a working, one of the, sorry. One of the, one of the issues I'm having and having worked in the tree company, I'm aware, and it's people going to the right door, enjoying their business. Really have that business. They're already a lot of footy out right now. You are a reputable company. I had two people last week that knocked on my door. Um, I want to have them the next time, but I wasn't there. I didn't come to their, to their car, but. Trying to come up with a standard, um, I mean, I did ask the one, do you have? Do you have a permit? Because you have to respect to go to town. It was a holiday. I knew. But, you know, what do you do after that? And how to respond to that. I think that was a high example on Facebook where they let them. No, it's on the other tree. It looks like a crepe pond, you know? Um. They're knocking on doors and they're dating business and they're, and they're not as reputable. I've just been in a class today on how many fatalities we have in the state of Florida. We're like the highest tree worker fatalities in the United States. I mean, you're up a. Because they don't have the appropriate safety equipment. They don't have, and there's a long list of what they're not doing correctly. Um, you know, and then also kind of possible licensing to make. So. But if there's a way that we can start coming up, I would appeal to all of us to try to come up with a working solution to my health limit, some of these.
Absolutely, Rob.
Well, solicitation is not allowed on the town in there. So if you want us to call the, um, one for the, you know, you come out.
You might want to include that in your, uh, in your tree one.
Yeah, and the, and the problem is the homeowner gets stuck with a huge fine. There was a house over here coming back only in the second. The tree company said, yeah, we sent the town to get a permit. They cut down their single tree on the property and now there's an eight thousand dollar fine. Hang in the air for the on the resident who just bought the house. And, uh, so, you know, it's very costly in many ways. For, you know, the town and residents as well. So.
Absolutely. Thank you, tree board. Thank you, counsel person Marty. Uh, any additional, uh, liaison reports? Go ahead.
We have L R B, uh, twenty seven for May, um, there we review the forty five percent drawings for the Butler and Seven Bridge project. Uh, the L R B, uh, moved to adopt the forty five percent. Shouldn't see.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for staff, uh, and counsel for, you know, providing the input. That be what we're seeing now from the engineers, a more presentable plan in a way that, um, is. Where they're hearing, uh, what our residents, uh, want to see, uh, and how they represent. So good stuff. Anything else, counsel? All right, we'll go ahead and move to staff reports. Uh, let's see. Uh, counsel Ray must have been active tonight. We'll let her start.
I have nothing.
There you go. DC.
Susan, make sure that, um. Do the final, but also make sure that, like, for any, some of the guidelines. Put it out there that way, uh, the residents can ask for, look at the passes, basically Monday through Friday. I would want to say nine to hundred and five, but if it's on the weekends, they should be out there soon. So they need to pause. Um, that's what I'm going to mention that to you. Just get, I mean, I just got some, I like that. Um, council member, you know, our, last week, our. You actually shoot.
I did.
Wow. So they were out there today. We got our second cap of our, um, fire qualification. Um. We also did, that's option people, example, like to the moment, um, he wasn't able to teach the, uh. Rachel Port filing classes of, um, fire speaking and whatnot. So I went ahead and did a small PowerPoint, a short PowerPoint on the foundation, which is. And so here we've done that. And councilman Marty would be happy to know. That we stopped, well, they were in the water. We were about to do the same thing. Um, but we caught one of those, uh, individuals here that was renting out. A boat, I guess you'd call it, perhaps it's a bit true. Um, anybody, I'm a fish. They have the four of the F L numbers painted on with a magic marker. Um, Jason really sort of thought probably thought it's a sink right here offshore. And it was a family who, but somehow somewhere on giving them attention, um, they were getting a pontoon boat for five hundred dollars. And we didn't watch it for them. The family died and they were getting back.
What color is it?
Uh, I, I don't mind. Did you see the pictures?
Well, there's our boat.
No, it was obviously a pontoon boat.
No, it's a black pontoon boat. It kind of looks like this one.
Actually, it wasn't a pontoon boat. It all of it was on, uh, one, but they had something else. They didn't have any of the light. All the women had to fire. So fortunately, orange, green, it all was all placed. It's a call of love. And, um, I would just tell you that that person has quite a few citations that they have to answer. But, um, Jason really, I gave it to him because this family, uh, we were renting a pontoon boat. I'm sure that he had no insurance. I have a lot of your citation, but they were a few. So unfortunately, it has the appropriate relationship that we have, right? And that was stated in what you're having. So. I will, so I'll, I'll get it.
No, no, no. I'll just send you a little way of a email.
Uh, the insurance of Jason, he was, he was all upset. Uh, my, David's that owner, um, he didn't cite the family, of course, but, um, I keep the rest channeling. But it's not. So, uh, I think that's a bad, right?
I just speak to that. That's what I think he was talking about. He said, you know, uh. Session areas, uh, people renting boats and over there. And I mean, further discussion with, uh, with the person. Um, and it's the team that's supposed to create a team or a, a, or a, they told me that there's only one person in Orange County. That has, that has license to use our rental, uh, or teams, teams park. And so I related to it. I think that's general ministry in town. No license to, uh. Rent boats and then or using any of those brands, even all of them using. Even all of them use teams car for business, and they're aware of all these, they're excited, people that will be setting up the doors. Uh, they've also got, you know, uh, individual friends that's been on Facebook, or, or, and there's, they're using their rants as well. So, uh, we did, I remember across one pontoon boat rental company, it said they had exclusive private, we need to hear, each town, over, usage for their rentals, so, um, going to, they're artificially doing it. They're just going to find out the car, and, uh, so, it's nothing, you know, either way informed, and they were...
You're going to have to make a decision.
So, that, that is very interesting. I mean, I've had, we've had three droughts the last few years, that's what's changed, and you don't need another one.
Normally, I would say his first draft, like, I could tell him, go ahead first, because he, I mean, he covers some things he doesn't.
Yeah. Are you trying to figure that out? Right.
I don't want to steal his money.
Uh, she's really seven years.
Why don't you go ahead and admire me?
Uh, we'll, we'll be, uh, next year, we do, we do, we'll have the year, minutes of tomorrow, uh, on, uh, five twenty-five, we have workshops, it's a go-to house, so we have, uh, a blog, a town council, uh, meeting. Um, also on five twenty-six, we have a workshop on five hundred blocks, I'm not very, okay, I'm just doing that one, because it costs, God, it's gonna be tonight. And we're ready to do this, while obviously we depend, whatever, it's a job for... Um, on June third, we're gonna have the local land, local workshop for the forty-five percent plans, it was lower speed, and that will be coming to you in five. Uh, tomorrow night, I have a, if you guys have any ideas, so we'll, we'll have some, uh, participation on that. Uh, so we can do with the forty-five percent plan, the rest of the, we're waiting for, waited around, when the ashes, the, uh, uh, we're just waiting on the surrender results from, through, and all the other ones that, um, go ahead and provide the public with this forty-five percent plan, also LRB, and, uh, council like that. Uh, the public for that in, uh, August, but have, probably need workshops in five. Uh, we have the, um, West Orange Trails Lines on Thursday, to the bottom of the after trails plan. Uh, and after that, we'll have, we'll have all the West Orange, a little bit of a sermon, I don't know if you'll have for the, the MOPAS. Uh, obviously, we have the huge rest of the facts, we're working with PD, also the paraparasy, um, um, starting back, uh, meetings back. Um, we have a secret accounting on Friday, it is very much a fact that it will be, um, starting back, especially focused into the once-in-sell tax, that's planning on being back, so, it's probably not happening this year, but probably for next another, or after, maybe the, um, general option, you know, over. Uh, again, remember that was huge back in the work between, uh, West Orange County, Central Orange County, uh, Orange County. Uh, figure out how to, uh, divide up all the funds equally and, um, not subsidize, again, the national systems that are going to be on for Orange County, so it's obviously Central, uh, Orange County. And then again, we just had a, uh, recent update on the inner code act this afternoon, where we have to set people work for our two, two-fourteen, so something like the last second, for the actual information, and have a deadline, uh, less than a week away. The public workshop's set and set, hopefully they presented it not, uh, this is pretty much straightforward, and we have hearings that's just members as well, so I'll have to track, but it's probably, it's gonna be next week, we have, we're waiting on is the Department of Revenue, that's then for, access to, communications service act, so on and so forth. Uh, but right now, we have a balanced budget and, uh, it's pretty good.
Sounds good. Please develop progress for making equal quality of the means, so we can not be the smoothest bunch in the world that the communication purely did and tell us, make a good decisions, and have good reviews, as you've seen, that are, you know, we get plenty of opportunity, probably, that's what it's like. You want to, uh, take it from here, Steve, you got a little list of whatever you want.
Yeah, I do. There you go. So, um, we've been pretty busy seeing how this works, um, actually, given that we have a lot of projects, and I would like to take the opportunity to help from the app that's coming out. That actually helping us with that, um, project, helping the world, uh, so, and if you serve your, my, my, your, thank you. Um, the pilot watch is still going well, we've seen actual feedback from the residents on it, so we're happy with the progress of that. Certainly, one of the issues that we're keeping, is trying to get some security access on the parks, so I've been hoping to, 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 you know, if they have to supply the kind of parts that don't have it, as well as making a connection, considering there's some of the parks sold that access, so we'll, we're all that. We'll know both, so... Um, but the first thing also was very busy again, was to be, um, we did, we had all those sales within the town limits, so probably kind of over a hundred and thirty of those, so it's pretty hot with our efforts on that, so... Um, we're just not going to be doing a shortage of Austin Park, or what would be called, uh, Atlanta, the engineers are here. We also, um, had issues, um, first with continual wash breaks, so when you have the roller, um, you put that, that was verified, you're involved, so it seems to be better than it has. We're hopeful that with the new product that we're testing, that will just, maybe, I think, a lot better. We also did a whole patch, up those on side ad, we're using the top side, that's out of the, so we need the finance. Um, and we're basing those top sides to a ratio of thirty-eighty, you know? We're also forming a global dynamic skateboard that can be moved to locations where it's, you can play the, um, correct, and play that all there. And then we can call our children, found into wire road, and, um, and also, that was on detective, um, active project for us, so...
Man, who didn't remember, innovate, but dreams, you can work on through yourself. It's very important, it's fine, it's correct.
So that's my call up, good to see, thank you.
Thank you. Quick things, uh, Susan, you brought up the perfect electrical access, which we didn't remember at one point. You know, we're, we're generally, we're waiting for you, and they just were not cooperating.
Yeah, we're not gonna be, the reason for that, you, you, and, well, that's, those are your locations that we're looking at, so it's scary, man.
Sure, and do we want to take that opportunity to look at that, I mean, again, or, or is that something that's meant to delay the process, or they don't want to delay the process?
I mean, the cameras are completely separate, it has a night vision, I guess, um, but, for, for the co-metrics, it's not for co-metrics, it's really gonna be used at Lake Street, um, that is, um, it doesn't need more of a, to use it some of our, the road regulations, so, and...
Yes, it's an opportunity, um, and if you get a moment, uh, critical, like, but there's like, we installed some solar lighting on the pedestrian bridge. I don't believe it's working anymore, I don't know. I see, I see really good, the light, those switches, um, maybe we can just come up, maybe you can just check out, get it, uh, and see if we can, like, get this back up. Because it gets really dark on that, there's a lot of good job, so, I don't know, I really can see that.
All right, and, uh, not so soon as under, and, uh, I'm not a reaction, but, uh, a provider that has patents on, um, grinding sidewalks, uh, or sidewalks, the A's plan. Uh, we're gonna work with this company, we're gonna quote, uh, they have a soul source, provisory, you know, equipment, where they promote mountain, in two sections, we do a process first. Um, put it just as a answer to the, so, we need to program that we already have, and hopefully we supply those, and make sure that our communities continue to be walkable.
Excellent, I love that, you can, uh, and then the product, even with three, three and X days, that road bed product is holding out unbelievable, so, so...
I'm waiting for a hand, you're right.
All right, and I, you know, we got two fairly good ones.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I'm scared.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's true, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, it is.
Unfortunately, I was scared in time, so...
Yeah, and, uh, I'm gonna be there.
It looked like I went to United, uh, fair, to, to, or, or, uh, the, unless they're, like, they go, uh, third, and the older, um, it's all there, they're, sorry, I had some other motions, but they probably didn't put all of them through there. I wouldn't expect the town to have to clean that up, or redo, or show me what they'll, do for it.
The search, uh, needs to pass, and covering the...
I can't wait to hit them with that, until they get me to power the park.
Yeah, I see.
Well, you can, plus the, uh, the, the, they were there, it's, uh, completely full of sand, so I have to, I'm a little much for, on, on the outside, so...
What are her, what are they? Counsel, what can I also do? Anybody for, anybody for three minutes? Go ahead, what, be there? Yeah.
So, um, and I'm sure if you received the, uh, financial disclosure forms, uh, that they're coming to the town, uh, so we should be correct on that, if not, uh, you know, you have to, just, you know, if you, you know, those, uh, C B five, clearly, you can just not process.
Hello?
All right, everybody, finish your...
Twenty-five dollars per day, and you're excited, you're free, you know, that, there's... All right, everybody, uh, Steve, uh, thank you, council, we are sure, that's seven forty-five, thank you all.